I'd like to call this meeting of the Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board to order. First of all, I'd like to, I think we can refer the meeting agenda as posted. There have been a few changes, but they will be discussed as we go along. I'd like your motion to accept the planning consultant's meeting notes?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. A review and acceptance. Have you all had a chance to review the June 5th and June 19th minutes? Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, God bless you. Okay. We have a few minutes here before our first public hearing.
Want to go to the ZBA?
I think we have a ZBA recommendation back here. We actually have two.
Very straightforward.
The first one is the Stephen Myron Hole Foundation. They are putting an addition on a house on Round Lake Road. It's going to be a library for their architectural library. We reviewed this with them in a pre-application meeting, and basically it's just addition, it's not a public facility, it's not a commercial facility, it's basically a private foundation putting this in. And so, we saw no reason for them to come before the planning board. They do need one variance, one, the part of the building that they're putting up is a few feet closer to the road than the current setback for the district that it's in, the RC5 district.
The addition is obviously attached to the existing dwelling, and there's a small section of that addition which is either three or six feet, I don't recall which one it is, it's either three or six feet of the addition, that is in fact within 100 feet of the front property.
Right. So, we felt there was no reason for them to come to the planning board, but they do need that variance. And the resolution we have here states, "One, the planning board finds the requested area variance to raise no significant planning or environmental issues. Two, beyond its consideration of the above, the planning board recommends the ZBA rely upon its own study of the facts in deciding the application in accordance with the criterion procedures set forth at Town Code Chapter 125, Section 125-124C and D, including consideration of the input of neighboring property owners. As stated in follow-up to a pre-submission conference held upon the ZEO's directive on June 19th, 2017, it is not anticipated any planning board approval will be required of the project, of the intended project." Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Michael?
Yes, ma'am.
I think if you move your mic just slightly back, it won't echo so much.
How's that?
Less echoey, less audible, but less echoey.
Oh. So you're gonna suffer one way or the other out there. Okay. Ah, okay, we're ready for our first public hearing. And... Okay. This is Kathryn Hoskin Fisher, 595 South Mill Road, subdivision plat approval, special use permits, and site plan approval. This is the continuation from June 5th, 2017, of combined public hearing on applications for subdivision plat approval under Town Code Chapter 101, subdivision of land, and for special use permits and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125, zoning, and the matter of, one, they propose lot line alteration between two parcels, each remaining in excess of the minimum lot area requirement, and, two, the conversion with addition of an existing non-habitable, non-contributing structure into a three-bedroom dwelling and installation of related site improvements, including onsite well and SDS within the Rural Agricultural District, Hudson River National Historic Landmarks District, and the town's LWRA as subject of application for area variances approved by the ZBA on June 21st, 2017, being classified as an unlisted action under SEACER. Take it away.
Should I go over the specifics of the project again?
Just in general, just, there may be a couple people who haven't heard it before.
Okay. Yeah, so this is properties on 595 South Mill Road. There's two adjacent properties under the same ownership. They're on the smaller of the two properties, which currently is undersized according to the zone. There is a non-habitable structure which he's proposing to turn into his residence. Part and parcel to that, he needs a septic system. He's also proposing to expand one of the two adjacent properties that has the residence on it, making it compliant with the zoning district that it's in, which is over 10 acres, and take away a bit thereby from the adjacent parcel that's undeveloped, that still will remain over 10 acres, at 15 acres. That's the short version of it.
Any questions from members of the public? Any questions from members of the planning board? All right, could I hear, I believe we already did the SEACER. This was an unlisted action under SEACER, I believe? Yep. Okay. We're all set with that. Could I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The public hearing is closed. What I have here is I have approval resolutions, and I'm just gonna hit the high points here because it's, well, it's long. "In the matter of the application for subdivision plat approval, approve the application for the Hoskin-Fisher Minor Two-Lot Subdivision Lot Line Alteration and authorizes the chair to stamp and sign the subdivision plat upon the applicant's satisfaction with below conditions and/or requirements with 180 calendar days of the adoption of the resolution. Stamping and signing of the subdivision plat is non-jurisdictional subdivision or for filing purposes only by the Dutchess County Health Department. Submission of final plat drawings in required form and number, except as may be modified into the number by the chair bearing all required stamps, seals, certificates, and notes, and payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due to the Town of Rhinebeck. In that no new lots or building sites are being created, means not applicable to this application either those provisions of the town land subdivision regulations requiring set aside for recreation, or cash in lieu of land payment to the town's recreation fund, or those provisions of the town zoning law concerning affordable housing. Requires within 60 calendar days of stamping by the chair, the filing of the approved plat with the Dutchess County clerk. In the matter of application for special use permit, finds both the intended work and proposed use to conform with the general standards of special use permits. Further, finds the intended work and the proposed use to be in conformance with the criteria associated with major excavation, special use permit. Grants without further condition the requested special use permit for major excavation subject to the steering of site plan approval. And in the matter of site plan approval, in consideration of the nature and extent of the work to be undertaken, waives requirement for submission of any documents, drawings, or other data not heretofore presented, which would otherwise be required upon strict application of the submissions checklist. B, approves the application under Town Code Chapter 125, Section 12533, scenic roads, and Section 12573, site plan approval required, and authorizes the chair to stamp and sign the site plan, and to transmit signed copies to the applicant, the ZEO, building inspector, upon the applicant's satisfaction of the following conditions within six months. Submission of the above cited site plan for stamping and signature. Documentation of design approval by the Dutchess County Health Department for intended water supply and sanitary sewage arrangements, and payments of any fees or reimbursable amounts due to the Town of Rhinebeck." Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved. Second?
Any discussion or comments? I will poll the board. Eric?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
And I will vote aye. Oh, do you have one of our little handouts, things to do to?
Do not have it on me, I will send it with the resolution.
Okay. What you'll be getting is a little handout which describes all those later steps that you have to do within six months for me to stamp and sign.
Great.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're permed. All right, moving right along. Our next public hearing is with Elise Webb, Elise Long, and David Webb, 19 Russell Avenue. They have spoken with the planning board, spoken with me, and they're not sure exactly how they wish to proceed. So what I'd like to suggest is that we continue this public hearing for them to our August 7th meeting in the interim, hoping they will decide what they want to do.
Michael?
Yes?
The board has a standing rule that any submission considered out of meeting has to be here at least two weeks beforehand. I would trust it would be very unlikely that they would make a new submission on a timely basis for August 7th, therefore I would guess that it would be appropriate for the board to schedule a continuation for the August 21st.
The 21st?
If it is going to occur.
Okay, yeah.
Because I think it's something you need to discuss.
Eee, oh, good, oh, yes, before I do-
Why made it not come?
Well, Woody and Melody will not be here on the 21st. Melody has Dutchess County Fair requirements, and Woody's gonna be out of town. So, are y'all gonna be here?
I'm gonna be here.
All of you.
Okay, so we know we have four for sure, and I don't know about Richard, Richard will find out. Okay, so we will have a quorum.
Four will cover us.
We'll have a bear quorum. Okay. So we could do that. Okay, I think that makes sense, Art, to do it that way.
So, motion to-
So, a motion to continue this public hearing for Long and Webb until August 21st?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Do you want to talk about the historic preservation? You're taking that off the calendar.
Oh, yes.
Give it about a couple minutes.
Okay. Melody just reminded me, we were gonna try and schedule an historic preservation training session for, what was the date?
July 31st.
For July 31st, and we have not been able to set it up yet. So we're gonna have to try to push that back to sometime in the autumn to do that. We still want to do it, we just haven't put it together yet. So, you're off on the 31st, you're free. Okay.
And then a follow-up topic in terms of the training session for later in the fall is going to be the SEACER regulations, and those are still held up at DEC, so the timing is probably gonna work out perfectly, that is probably gonna be into the November period before that, that would be appropriate.
So, we have-
Do you want to do the second zone?
Yeah, we'll do the second ZBA. We still have three minutes before the, before your public hearing, so.
Well, that time I'd like to welcome Art back to the land of the well in, in Allen Harding.
Almost, thank you. That's almost, this is the first I've been more than six miles away from home base in two weeks.
Yeah. The way Lyme disease is going through all of our people, we may not have a quorum in August. So, okay. We have one other quick ZBA. This is in the case of WTR Rhinebeck LLC. It is a older subdivision that was done prior to the 2009 zoning law, when the district was a one-acre district. It's now a five-acre district, so a number of setback, variances for setbacks are required to allow them to build on these already approved building lots. So basically, what we have here for this resolution is the planning board finds the requested area variances to raise no significant planning or environmental issues, and beyond its consideration of the above, the planning board recommends the ZBA rely upon its own study of the facts in deciding the application in accordance with the criterion procedures set forth at Town Code Chapter 125, Sections 125, 124C and D, including consideration of the input of neighboring property owners. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Oh, well, I think we're close enough here. Our next public hearing. This is Baptist Home of Brooklyn, Inc., at 46 Brookmead Drive, special use permit and site plan approval. This is the continuation from June 5th, 2017, of combined public hearing on applications for special use permit and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125, zoning, in the matter of Brookmead Center, formerly the Greens of Brookmead, the same project, just a different name. The proposed construction of a 18,870 square foot adult day camp facility and Brookmead accessory uses under Town zoning law Sections 12520 and 125-68S. The undertaking of related site improvements including accessways, parking areas, lighting, landscaping, and utilities, and the upgrading of the existing wastewater treatment facility and a 74.27 acre parcel within the rural countryside RC5 district, the water resource overlay and flood fringe overlay districts, and adjacent to Certified Agricultural District. All is set forth within documents prepared by the project architect and project engineer, and submitted on behalf of the applicant by the former on January 31st and March 13th, 2017, being classified as an unlisted action under SEACER. For the members of the planning board, the one thing we were waiting for on this was the sign-off from Ray, our engineer, on the comments and whatnot, and he has signed off on this project. He's fully satisfied with the responses he's gotten from the project's engineer.
And I too have signed off based upon the responses from the project architect and comments that I had offered.
Good. Well, thank you for having us again.
Yes.
Mike, you have a perfect synopsis of the entire project that you just stated. Anything you need to hear from me, because it's still a public hearing, or?
Anyone in the public have any questions about this project? Then I should speak closer to the microphone. Anyone on the planning board have any further questions?
Well, I had asked at a prior meeting if a traffic study had been done. Has that consequently been undertaken or looked into?
A traffic study has not been done. We don't have an official request yet of it, though we do have a potential to look into having one done if need.
I don't think it's necessary.
I think we have a gentleman back here.
I was curious, I, I understood that there was any traffic study done by Brookmead in relation to the project, and I'm sort of representing a group of people who live on the street there, and you may know, definitely been trying to get the speed limit reduced on that section of 308, right part of Brookmead, South Mill Road, it's in town. So I'm wondering if there has been a traffic study, and what does the traffic study supposed to accomplish?
A study has not been performed.
And it doesn't dealt tail in any way with onlookers?
There was an email going around from the neighbors on 308 for several months now, I think, with the request that the speed limit be reduced from 45 to 35, even I think before this project was thought of. So I think tonight the neighbors were asked to come, talk about that, how it's related to this, or how the traffic study became a part of this, I don't know. Well, we are in favor also of reducing the speed limit to 35, in support of just the traffic that's going through quickly, and you're seeing people traveling 55, 65 miles an hour, fine, dangerous for everyone.
Yeah, I'm not sure what for the purpose of the traffic study we're considering, to determine how much additional traffic is gonna be entering that driveway. We could impact our goal of giving this delivered.
Okay. I think Art had a comment?
I have a couple of comments, just about the whole subject of traffic speed limits and traffic studies, et cetera. With respect to the speed limit, of course, that's in the jurisdiction of state DOT. The local avenue to get to DOT without that particular question would be through the town board. Town board does have the authority to request that DOT study the question and perhaps adopt a reduction in speed limit at that particular location. With respect to the typical type of traffic study that would be conducted of a project of this sort, what it would be really analyzing is the operation of the intersection of the site driveway with the public highway. In this particular case, I looked at the traffic generation that was noted in the environmental assessment form, I know I had those notes directly in front of me, but it's reasonably, it's a very low generation, it's a comparatively low generation, and one that would clearly not trigger that intersection to operate at less than what we call a level C, ranging from A to E. So C is a perfectly level, a perfectly acceptable level of service. Secondly, the amount of traffic that would be intersecting at that point would not be such that would warrant, from a DOT standpoint, the installation of any sort of a traffic signal at that particular location. With respect to your concern about reducing the speed limit, well, there'll be a few extra cars added at that particular location, which I guess enhances the case of DOT perhaps addressing the speed limit. And frankly, I agree that the speed limit, although I have no say in the matter, I agree that that speed limit at that location should be reduced.
Eric, what, how does, how does that jive?
Well, I've been told that no study has been undertaken, and I didn't hear that one is going to be undertaken, is that correct?
At this point, none.
Okay. And what would trigger one being undertaken?
A substantial volume of traffic that would trigger the possibility of a level of service less than C, which would require then some onsite mitigation in terms of the intersection design.
The fact that X number of people were now gonna be visiting this property, and those people are gonna be usually elderly, and does that have any bearing on the situation?
Traffic assessment's done on the basis of number of vehicle trips, without, not with respect to who's driving those vehicles.
Okay.
Yeah, number of vehicle trips and the type of vehicles, in other words, separating out automobiles from random trailers or what have you, but not distinguishing between junior drivers, senior drivers, et cetera.
So in order to get the number of people in and out of the Brookmead property based on the new occupancy of this new facility, can we get those numbers from you to pass on to the DOT, and, because I don't know if they've taken, they're taking any of that into consideration when looking at just the traffic on 308?
Do you want that information?
Yes.
We're hearing.
Yeah, and I think possibly what you really want to do, I think from what Art was saying, is put together your request for the lower speed limit, and actually first approach the town board, something that they need to, they need to get behind to do.
But is that relevant to this discussion?
I'm just, because the issue was raised.
It's not relevant to the proceeding?
No, I pointed that out because it is a, the avenue, the channel for that sort of thing.
But the town board has no clout with the DOT.
Town board, town board has clout in terms of being able to make a request and asking that that request be examined.
Yeah.
The town board does not have the authority to regulate the speed or posting or anything else on a state highway.
But what they can do is request the DOT to do a traffic study, such as, you know, put those little black things across to actually do a traffic count, to find out what the traffic is on that road, the speed limit, and that's what they did on Slay Quarry, well, it's a county road, in order to get the speed limit reduced from 55 down to 45 on that one section. Not that anyone's driving any slower, but it is a lower speed limit, so there is that.
Art, am I hearing, am I interpreting what you're saying correctly, in that you don't think that the traffic threshold has been met to require a traffic study?
I'm saying that the traffic they generated here is not even close that to cause a level of, less than level of service C. Frankly, I didn't run the numbers completely, but I believe that the level of service at that intersection is in fact level of service A for all turning movements, peak AM, peak PM, peak Saturday, et cetera.
And is that based on the new facility being added?
Yeah, based on, this facility is not a heavy traffic generator. It's not as if it's a shopping center or something of that sort.
Well, that's true, but it's also, I mean, more people are going there probably than the average business in town, so.
We were doing a check on transportation.
Correct.
So one vehicle, instead of having people drop off, so it's even-
Yeah, there's that sort of-
So it may have a capacity of 50, but we're doing a more, you know.
In a single van?
Many vehicles are using that.
Thank you.
But we will support anything, because our neighbors are doing regards to speed limit reductions, so we'll continue that.
Very good.
And the village police are doing their part, they usually have a car there right along by Mathies, just in case someone's going a little too fast. Other questions for board members? Anyone else in the public? Okay, I have a SEACER resolution I'll read. Okay. "Pursuant to the planning board's classification of the proposed action as an unlisted action under SEACER, determines upon its review of the full EAF Part 1 and its own completion of the next full EAF Part 2, in consideration of both the criteria for determining significance set forth in Title VI, Part 617.7C NYCRR, including consideration of agricultural land use policies, that proposed action as described above will cause no potential significant adverse impact on the environment, and thus issues a negative declaration, determination of nonsignificance under SEACER, giving an environmental impact statement to not be required and stating that such will not be prepared. Two, authorizes the chair to so execute the full EAF and directs the planning board clerk to distribute and file the executed determination of significance in the manner set forth within the SEACER implementing regulations Title VI, Part 617.12 NYCRR."
Michael, you should point out that that, the action portion of that resolution was, follows an opening paragraph that describes the-
Yes.
-project and the plans that were involved being considered, et cetera.
Yes, but having done a wonderful job with that, I thought I would repeat his words. So, could I hear a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? I'll poll the board. Eric?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Could I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay, I have a motion of, a resolution of approval here.
There are a couple modifications in the, in the resolution, which we might as well, Sharon, we can get Gretchen get into the record here before the board considers the resolution at all. In, it's actually in meeting notes, page eight, the P3 paragraph at the front of the page. The P3 paragraph is deleted in that census resolution was prepared, sign-off letters have been issued by both myself and the planning board engineer. Based upon comment by the planning board engineer, and I'll pass these on to you, Gretchen, there are two new conditions that are gonna be inserted as three and four, which then will move condition four to number five. Condition number three, there's a condition here that already referred to the health department permit. There's a condition three, documentation of all other required permits and outside agency approvals shall also be required. This includes, but is not limited to, New York State Department of DEC for wastewater improvements, and SWIP notice of intent, as well as County Health Department. Four, posting of escrow to the Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board for construction inspections by the Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board Engineer regarding compliance with the approved site plan. Prior to work beginning onsite, a pre-construction meeting shall be held with the Town.
Okay.
Let me pass those down to you.
Did you get these down?
The rest of the resolution stands as written.
Okay, well, the opening paragraph describes what's going to happen, so I think we've done that. So we're gonna go right to the matter of applications for special use permit. A, finds both the intended work and proposed use to conform with the general standards of special use permit uses set forth in Town Code Chapter 125, zoning, Section 12567. B, further finds the intended work and proposed use to be in conformance with criteria associated with Chapter 125 zoning, Section 12541, flood fringe overlay district, Section 12554, water resource overlay district, and Section 12568NN, major excavation. C, further finds the proposed use to be in conformance with the additional standards for adult day camp set forth in Section 125-68S. In consideration of the above, grants the requested special use permit subject to the applicant's satisfaction of the following conditions and/or requirements within six calendar months of the adoption of this resolution. Securing of site plan approval, payment of any outstanding fees or expenses and reimbursable amounts incurred by the Town in the review and processing of these applications for special use permit. In the matter of applications for site plan review and approval, grants requested site plan approval in consideration of the following, and the following is half a page of all the documents that you submitted. The below-listed engineering reports and the listed response letters. B, authorizes the chair to stamp and sign a complete set of the architectural and site civil drawings upon the applicant's satisfaction of each of the below conditions and/or requirements within six calendar months of the adoption of this resolution. One, submission of the above cited set of architectural and site civil drawings for stamping and signature in either the number specified under Town Code Chapter 125, Section 12578, subsection B, or as may be modified to a lesser number by the chair in consideration of filing and distribution requirements. Two, documentation of requested design approval by the Dutchess County Health Department and/or New York State DEC for intended water supply and sanitary sewage arrangements, with an understood interim connection of Brookmead Center to the existing wastewater treatment facility, may proceed construction completion of the new wastewater facility. Three, the documentation of all other approvals. Four, the posting of an escrow account for construction inspections prior and during the construction of this project. Five, payment of any fees or reimbursable amounts due to Town related to review and processing of both this application and the aforementioned application for special use permits.
Taking this action.
Oh, you want me to read that? Okay. "In taking this action, the planning board further authorizes the town zoning enforcement officer and/or building inspector, following receipt of the above cited site plan stamped and signed by the chair, to issue first a building permit and certificate of occupancy use for both Brookmead Center and the new wastewater treatment facility upon his determination of the terms of this resolution and all the codes, laws, rules, or regulations within the purview of the ZEO and/or building inspector, including, but not limited to, the requirements of the Dutchess County Sanitary Code and the New York State Uniform Building, Construction, and Fire Prevention Code, have been satisfied." Alrighty. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions, amendments? Okay, I'll poll the board. Eric?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you very much.
And upon receipt of your approved resolution, you'll receive a nice little handout from our clerk telling you all the different steps you have to do to get final stamping and signature done.
Wonderful.
Which I think you already know, but there it is.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for your presentations and your patience. And thanks all the people who've come to support you. It's, uh, they did a very nice job.
They actually...
Okay.
They actually want to have proceeds, so that's pretty much what you just drafted. It's water. It's going to be posted.
He's cool, sir.
And we can. Yes, thank you. It's like Christmas, every planning board meeting.
Except you have to read all of it. Read it and file it.
He has better things to do.
Why not?
That's pretty much it.
Why not?
He's probably one of them.
I neither.
No, he doesn't.
Good man.
Well, they got something to say that might change this place.
There's a couple of...
Okay. Our next public hearing, Mench Grasmere LLC, Mill Road, and US Route Nine subdivision platte special use permit, wetlands permit, and site plan approval. Conduct of combined public hearing on applications by Grasmere Mench LLC for subdivision platte approval consolidation of two parcels under Town Code Chapter 101 subdivision of land to satisfy certain Duchess County Health Department requirements, and amendment of Phase One site plan approvals under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning to accommodate a modified intersection of the proposed entrance-only site driveway with Mill Road in the matter of the previously approved county, uh, country in two, Grasmere Farm Hotel Development on Mill Road and US Route Nine within RA 10 District, the Hudsonboro National Historic Landmarks District, and the Town's LWRA. The overall project was previously classified as a Type One action under SEAKER and was the subject of a coordinated review and prior Planning Board actions, including acceptance of draft and finer environmental impact statements, issuance of a statement of findings, and a statement of consistency with the LWRP coastal policies, and adoption of resolutions granting special use permit, site plan approval, wetlands permit, and certificate of removal or demolition. Concurrently with this consideration of the amendment of the Phase One site plan approval, Grasmere Mench LLC has requested the Planning Board, one, to extend the special use permit of the Phase One site plan approval and associated wetlands permit and certificate of removal or demolition by a period of one year, and, two, amend its prior resolution approving the special use permit to eliminate the condition a minimum 250-acre parcel be subdivided from within the greater acreage identified within the EIS as such subdivision is not required for a county, a country in two, under Town Code Chapter 125. Take it away.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Morando. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Cuddy and Fader, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Grasmere Project. That's a mouthful, that notice, so if I could just do a sort of bullet point summary for the public and for the board's benefit, if that's okay?
Absolutely.
So, everyone here pretty much knows the Grasmere Project. I think at this point it's been around a long time, but just, just for purposes of summary fashion explanation, I'll say, as we know, it's a hotel and resort approved for a hundred and ten units with associated amenities that a resort would typically have, or it was approved as a country in two. It received a special use permit to operate as a country in two. It received, the board completed a very comprehensive SEAKER findings, adopted that a couple of years back, and it's been noted its consistency as we went on over the past couple of years. It also received, and I think this is important, the site plan approval for Phase One. And I think that's important to just recognize as a group because it is a phased project. So, we have that site plan approval, so future phases will still be under review by this board. What we're doing here now, as you've heard the last couple of times we were here, is we're trying to close out all the conditions from the original approvals. There's extensive amount of outside agency approvals and permits we needed to get, and we're right there. We're close to the end zone. So, what we're trying to do is sort of clean up all those extras and, and move forward with getting our Phase One, Phase One A site plan approval stamped. For those of the board, and if the public doesn't know, we also had the Phase One split up into Phase One A, Phase One B, so we can get going on some of that work in the initial stage for Phase One. So what we're seeking to do right at this point is address some of these outstanding items, one of them being a minor lot consolidation for approved by this board, which I'll talk about in a moment. We're trying to clarify a condition regarding that subdivision aspect of it, the 250 acres, which I'm going to further clarify in a minute, and also a slight modification to the site plan, just dealing with the actual access point off Mill Road, which Jonathan's going to walk you through on a plan in a moment. The, and of course, we're asking for extensions because August 6th is our next deadline, and that's coming quickly, so as we keep working, we want to preserve our approvals. So, let me first say what we're not asking for. We are not asking for any type of waiver of the 250-acre requirement for a country in two. We completely agree that that is a requirement under your code for a country in two. It's a requirement of the SEAKER findings, it's a requirement of the Planning Board resolutions upwards until today, so just to be on the same page. What we're trying to do is two things. One, we have to address a Department of Health comment in their, in their last memo, which we write down at the last couple of comments, and one of those comments is, yeah, it is rather hot. One of those comments is that for Phase One, you can't have, or you can't, I shouldn't say can't, it's suggested by the Department of Health that all the lines and infrastructure that serves the buildings have to be on the same parcel. So for Phase One, what we're doing is, and these are the two parcels that, when you come off Route Nine over here, you come down off Mill Road over here, and of course, there's that very large third parcel down here. What we're doing is consolidating these two parcels, so there's no change to the project as a result of the lot consolidation. What we're doing is basically erasing that line in between these two front parcels. It's a 25-acre parcel and a 29-acre parcel, so now there'll be one 54-acre parcel. There will still, however, be 190-plus acres from the third parcel included in the Grasmere Project.
Yeah, to heckle me, you guys, this is where Grasmere is right here about on the problem. So this is the very top, and the remainder of the four, the four, larger 450-acre parcel is down, is down here, and this is just the piece that goes over between Grasmere and the town.
Exactly, and I was actually going to flip this over at the risk of ripping our plan here, and to show, if anyone's interested, that this is all part of that Phase One, and this is all inside that, those two, those two parcels there that we were talking about consolidating to address this DOH comment.
Yeah, and the issue was that the septic system for these buildings, which is on this parcel, is located in the front yard of this parcel, so they wanted to have that under the same ownership, not two separate parcels with the septic on one and the septic on the other.
And as a separate item which came up is, is the 250-acre aspect of this, which, again, we're not looking for a waiver from. The code does, however, allow for 250 acres to be across a combination of parcels, and that's what we have here, we have three. Collectively, the parcels are 510 or 520 or so acres, 250 of which will be designated for the, for the, for the country in two. And again, our request has not changed that at all. The code was pretty, actually pretty forward-thinking in allowing for a combination of parcels because in a situation like this, where the Phase One is now set forth and we're working on, and Phase Two is to come, and it'll be within the environmental parameters of the SEAKER findings, but it's something that's still in the works, so to try to put a line on paper around that for 250 acres is a little premature. I mean, what we're trying to do is just get started on Phase One. So that's, I think the best way to explain that. I think, at this point, Jonathan, you want to walk them through the change on Mill Road?
Yeah, this last change is a little smaller, but it's just when we got into the detailed engineering work. The existing drive comes out basically right here, there's the brick pillars. We had originally...
Jonathan, Jonathan, you guys should probably speak into the microphone so that, and you can walk around with that. You can, you can take that thing right off of there.
Sorry about that.
No, that's why...
Is it, is it better?
It is indeed.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Good. Well, this last one is really pretty simple. It's a, the existing drive, there's two brick pillars right here on Mill Road, and this is how the existing drive works. There was some concern about, and this is just an entrance, and it's always been approved as an entrance, that's a condition of approval, you know, throughout this process. So, instead of using this entrance the way that it is, where there's some, some issues, especially with turning this way, it was suggested that we consider moving the entrance down to create a better access point. We originally had that access point coming in sort of here, we moved it down about forty feet to create a better turning radius, and that was just something that, that came up as part of the detailed engineering work when we got to this piece, and we, I shared that with the highway superintendent, and they agreed that it was a better solution this way, the way that geometry works is better.
And of course, bringing it full circle, one of the requirements of our approvals is to obtain a sign-off from the Town Highway Super in respect to this access, so that's how this originated, is part of that process, which I, like Jonathan said, has now been signed off on. So, and very importantly, we note that this is not changing the approvals which are for entrance only here. That is in the, in the resolutions, that's in SEAKER findings, so that, that's remaining the same, it's just a point of access to improve visibility and site orientation. So, what we're asking for is kind of a collection of things to get this resolved, a minor site plan amendment, the lot consolidation, addressing that condition regarding the subdivision, and, and the extensions, and of course, a consistency statement with the SEAKER findings and/or a negative declaration by this board as it relates to those approvals.
Yeah, and with respect to the other outside agency approvals, we're just about done. I mean, there was some, I'm back and forth on one final issue with the Department of Health, there's been a conceptual agreement, so it's really just a question of, well, knock on wood, but it seems at this point like it's just a question of, of, of creating the, the drawings that reflect what's been agreed to, and the rest of it, we're in a, we, I think we're in compliance, so it's pretty exciting.
And I think I'll close by saying, this project will, you'll continue to see this project, we're going to continue to work with this board. Like I said, this is a phased project, and we're just getting underway, so you'll continue to be a part of that process as it develops.
Thank you. Members of the board, questions?
A quick question about the, two, actually, both aspects. First is about the lot/land consolidation. What precludes, I mean, just because you don't know what other acreage is going to be included in the 250, that you're just consolidating these two now, this 50 acres?
Well, no, it's, the reason is that, the reason is that the Department of Health didn't want to see a situation where the way, if we don't...
No, I understand why, why a consolidation is taking place, but why isn't a consolidation of that third parcel going on at the same time?
Yeah, the third parcel is, is much larger, that's about 455 acres, and for the Phase One A, we don't have any of the building on that parcel, so there was no, there was no need to consolidate that at this point. The only reason we're looking at the consolidation on those other two has to do with the fact that the Department of Health asked us to. If that wasn't a requirement from them...
So that, but a section of that 450 acres is going to be part of this 250?
Yeah, it's going to be a part of it, it's going to be allocated to...
Where that line between that, the 450 and the 200 acres is going to be?
Yeah, exactly, and we're just, we just don't want to have to come back to the board again and say, now we want to change this whole thing, and, you know, and it's a large surveying effort and everything else, and we're going through a whole, you know, approval process around it. We don't want to have to come back and redo it because we're not asking to do anything on the remainder of the property, and to do anything on the remainder of the property, the entire 500 acres, we'd have to come back to the board and, and get approval to do that.
Okay, and on the driveway, will there be anything that, any kind of easement on the land that will say that's entrance only, or is that going to just be according to our resolutions here?
It'll be a requirement of the approval.
That there be an easement on the property?
That, that, that won't have to be an easement, it's part of the site plan approval, that can only be used as an entrance, it cannot be used as an exit.
It specifically says that on the site. But it doesn't run with the land or anything?
Yeah, yeah, it does, and it runs with the special use permit and the site plan.
But if the use of the land changes, then that could change as well.
If the use were to change, potentially, yes, but as long as this project exists...
So it doesn't lock it in as an entrance only for...
Locks it in as a country in?
Well, it locks it in as a country in. If someone wanted to do something else, they put apartments there or something else, they would have to come back with a whole new approval, but it's very likely that if it were an apartment, the same requirement for the Mill Road entrance would still make it just an entrance. Planning Board could still do that. Edna?
I've questioned, much of this went on before I was on the Planning Board, so I don't have background information. My understanding of the zoning law is that state road access is required for a country in two. What was the rationale for allowing any access off Mill Road?
Okay, I think I might be able to answer this, and you can correct me when I screw up. Basically, the feeling was, and it's just for entrance to the manor, it's not any of the other facilities on the site that will exist, that, or any construction, or any work, or anything like that, that all comes from Route Nine. I think the feeling of the applicant was that part of the experience of coming to Grasmere is going down the historic drive through the, through the locust trees and whatnot, and so with feeling, and the Planning Board felt at the time it was not an unreasonable request for strictly an entrance to the manor house, not an exit from it or from anything else, that that would fit in with the historic nature of the property and the experience that, you know, they're hoping to offer people.
There will be other facilities that would be used by people who are not staying at the country in?
Yes.
How will it be controlled to keep those people from using that entrance?
I will let Jonathan answer that.
No, people that are coming, as other day guests or hotel guests, are going to be allowed to use that as an entrance. All of the exiting, though, for all, any guests, is off of Route Nine, so all of that traffic exit onto Route Nine, all of the staff, entrance and exit is Route Nine, and then for any events, for, you know, if there's a wedding or something like that, that's all off of Route Nine. So, really, the, the large, large majority of the, of the actual traffic is, is coming in and off of Route Nine. It's just preserving that historic drive as part of the arrival experience for people that are visiting the property, as guests, not as staff.
Other questions? Sharon?
Okay, I have a few. The, the Mill Road entrance, you're going to leave the current pillars there, because they're the current entrance, you're not going to, exactly, to just like be a non-hemisphere entrance, so if people want to walk to town, they could walk out that way?
That's how we're thinking of it right now, yeah.
Okay, and the other thing, is also signage, that it's one-way?
Yeah.
Going in, but also in by Grasmere, that it's no exit?
Yeah, definitely.
And is it going to stay one lane wide?
Yeah, we're not planning on, on widening it, and...
Are you going to pretty much keep it the way it is, or are you going to do something for the dust, or?
Yeah, we're going to do something for the dust, and, but we want to keep it feeling like it's a, a sort of a country lane. We may sort of chip seal it to keep the dust down, that seems like the most likely, but what we really want to do is keep the appearance of it really being a, a country, a state entrance, and it's going to stay as a single. And the other reason that we, we, you know, as I think most of the board remembers, we originally had applied to have it be both an entrance and an exit for guests, and then we got rid of the, the exit piece, and, and one benefit of that, which we realized as we started to think about it more, was that it wouldn't force us to widen that road, and if we widened the road, we were also worried that we could do some damage to some of the, to some of the trees that run along the drive. So the idea is to keep it, to keep it sort of looking, I mean, we want to spruce it up and, and bring some of those trees back to health, but the idea is to keep it feeling the way that it does now.
Okay, and another thing on the road, you had talked at one meeting about the lighting along the road?
Yeah.
I really hate the idea of lighting along the road, but, because if you wanted to keep, keep it as like a carriage lane going into an old mansion, they didn't have fifteen-foot, was it twelve-foot?
Twelve-foot.
Poles every, every so often to light it?
We, yeah, I think...
And minimize the lighting.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll certainly look at all ways to do that. That, that's our, our preference is to keep it feeling, you know, like it's, like if you're entering a country estate. There were some requirements that we had to comply with, with commercial lighting codes, so that, that, it has to do more with, with that than it does with our own attitude towards it.
Because there's nothing better than on a summer night to go up to the cemetery there and look at the stars.
Yeah.
Because there's no lights around anywhere.
Yeah.
So that's, that's, so that was my questions on the road. My other question is, this 250 acres, because you're asking to eliminate the condition of minimum 250-acre parcel be subdivided, and it just makes, that's maybe the way it's worded, but that statement just makes no sense, and I've got a page and a half of notes on it, because it just makes no sense to me. What are you doing with this 250 acres? Where is it coming from? You've now got 50 acres if we combine the two lots, which makes sense, but the zoning law does say a minimum lot, it doesn't say a minimum lots, and when you combine, or combining lots, when you combine something, you usually add them together. So, I, I mean, I'm looking at that you would, you'd be like, do a lot/line alternation of the 450-acre lot to add the missing acreage, or you could add the whole 450-acre lot to the, to do 50-acre lot, or you could do an easement, which I don't think is the best idea, but if you did an easement, it would have to be really defined on the map, and right now, where is this 250 acres? We don't know where this 250 acres is. Wait a minute, and, because I'll lose my train of thought, and, you know, when we had a site visit last fall, we were talking about the, the house down by the waterfall, and is that going to be part of it? And if it's going to be part of it, what about the entrance off of Mill Road that goes down to that, is that still going to be part of it? So, there's a lot of issues with this 250 acres, and it's like, I really have a lot of issues with it.
So, if I could just, maybe you get into a little more of the substance, I'm just a little procedural response to that. We explored that, you know, some of those options. I think what you have to keep in mind is, we're approved for certain things. So we're, we're approved for, for example, under a finding statement of, under SEACER, for certain disturbance areas. So that, those are the areas that are still approved to be disturbed. However, you create a 250 acre or you don't, right? Because it's still in that area within 500 acres. It's not extending beyond that. There's things in the finding statement, there's things in the existing approvals that talk about areas to preserve. That's all still part of it. So it's not like we're trying to cut any of that out of this. It's just to actually paint a line on it at this very moment is somewhat constrictive and limiting to how to proceed with the subsequent phases. Also, procedurally, to try to incorporate a substantial more amount of acreage opens up even more questions. Well, what are you doing with this and that? So it actually, we, we really felt that it complicated things even more. What we're saying is that there's still, the three parcels that were involved originally are still involved. What we're saying is that there'll still be at least 250 acres. This disturbance will still be in the same areas that, that we've evaluated, you know, within the parameters of the wall. And we're complying with the code in the sense that it's 250 acres on a combination of parcels. It's just that, again, at this early stage, to go forth and try to create that line becomes limiting. And didn't see it as much of a gain for, for either side, to be honest.
Yeah, and it's really, the, right now, it's, when we originally proposed this, we showed the, the three parcels, the 455-acre parcel, the 30-acre parcel, and the 25-acre parcel that we're now combining. So between those three, we've got over 500 acres, and we're not asking for permission to do anything on the remainder of that 500 acres. If we decide that we wanna proceed to future phases, we'd come back to the board and obviously have to show exactly what we were looking to do. But we've got, you know, doubled the, the two required 250 acres between those three parcels available.
Right. I know you've, I know you've got the land, it's, but it's the way this, this is worded in here that you want to eliminate that condition of the minimum 250 acres.
It's just the-
I think the wording on that, I read it too, and I could see-
In the note, yeah.
-misinterpreted to make it seem as if we were trying to-
So how should that, how should that sentence read? How should that sentence read then?
The app, that, yeah.
I'll take some responsibility maybe for the wording and the public notice. Technically, it's not the, not a requirement of the zoning law, the 250-acre requirement that anyone is asking to waive. What is being requested here is the specific provision that was written into the special use permit resolution that called for the, the actual creation of a 250-acre subdivision, subdivided parcel. The request is that particular condition be removed from the resolution. Because, number one, that resolution, that condition, most importantly, that condition is not called for in the town zoning law. The town zoning law simply requires that 250 acres be available for the country in two. And I would suggest that in some manner, it clearly be acknowledged by the applicant that that is a requirement. So bottom line is that the request for removal of the stated condition appears to be appropriate. What would also be appropriate is something that's not provided for in the, the draft resolution that I provided you a couple of days ago. And that is, while there is the deletion of the condition from the prior approvals, there would also be a statement to the effect, and without the exact wording, that notwithstanding the removal of that condition, the applicant is required to submit certified acknowledgement of the minimum 250-acre requirement for issuance and maintenance of the site plan approval and the special permit for the country in two, including meeting this requirement for the initial stamping and signing of the chair by the phase, for the Phase 1A site plan.
And that, and that's something-
Now, down, down the road, the applicant could choose to integrate the rest of that 450-acre piece, could integrate a portion of that piece, or could modify the prior application to deal with another particular tract of land that you mentioned, which has not been on the table at any point in this process to date, and that is the waterfall house.
I have a question. Are you saying, Art, that the zoning law does not require the 250 acres to be on one parcel?
They have to be contiguous, right? But they don't have to be combined?
Wait, wait, wait.
Parcel or parcels. Parcels totally more than.
But they have to be contiguous, is that correct?
Yeah, they have to be contiguous.
So you're, so what you're saying-
But they don't have to be consolidated.
Which was the, which was the test that this particular application met from day one. The application or the proposal was for development of the country in two on three contiguous parcels, or whatever portion of those three contiguous parcels would be necessary in order to aggregate a minimum of 250 acres.
And you're saying that it could forevermore be three separate parcels, so long as-
Well, they're saying two now.
As-
It will be, it will be two now, yes.
Are you saying that forevermore, the 250 acres could be made up by three separate parcels that are contiguous? Is that what you're saying, Art?
That's what the zoning law would allow. And obviously, in this particular case, with an extenuating circumstance where the Health Department said, no, we want the two small parcels combined. Someone else down the road may say that there has to be another, another consolidation action. But in order to meet the requirement of the special use permit and the site plan, the current situation, I think, is appropriate, provided that, something that really hasn't been stated to date, all of the assertions that have been stated to date about maintenance of the 250, et cetera, have been in SEACER and other documents that have been produced by the planning board. What I'm suggesting is that now, they're now be complementing that written acknowledgement of the requirement by the applicant. And that's nothing new to you folks.
No, no. Again, we're on the same page. 250 acres of land is required for a country in two. It's just the action of the subdivision is what's holding us up.
And I think it's important to note that if at any time the applicant chose to do anything else on that property, if at any time the 250 acres allocated to the country in fell below 250 acres, it would be the planning board's responsibility to hold a public hearing and revoke the special use permit.
One more question. Is it the intention, is it your intention eventually, to consolidate parcels so that on one parcel you will have 250 acres?
It's possible. And some of them may get into a fin, a project financing question. So it may be that once we get to that point, we're gonna have to do that. Right now, given what we're proposing, which is really just the first three cottages and to start work on the manor house, the plan is to keep them separate. Because it's not, it's not, it's not something that's required for us to satisfy the conditions that the board gave us.
Okay, thank you.
Jonathan, is there any portion of that 450 acres that's just not suitable for this project, or?
It's just a big piece of land. I mean, there's, there's, there's some really great parts of it. You know, some are probably, would be more challenging to build on, certainly than others. And there's a whole side of it that runs down by the Lanzman Hill, too, which, you know, we've, we've always thought would, would be a nice spot for hiking trails and things like that.
There's, there's no question about the fact, just that while the zoning law, in a lot of cases, has requirements about a particular tract of land being 75% buildable or something like that, there's no question about the fact that 75% or more of any 250 acres that would be consolidated here would fall, would fall within the category of being buildable territory, developable land.
Yeah, that's, that's it.
Most of the open land is either-
That was basically what I was wondering.
It's open, it's forest land, it's open, open ag land, et cetera.
Right.
It's not, not rock formations and very steep slopes and what have you.
One more, one more thing. Just reading the zoning law, it says a minimum lot area of 250 gross acres is required for a country in two. On a parcel, and then also on a parcel or combined parcels of land. It doesn't say contiguous, which, I mean, obviously it would be. But it doesn't say, I can do this lot here and this lot here, and I own this one today, and, and then I own this one tomorrow. That's, it says a minimum lot area, one lot. Doesn't say lots, it says lot. That's-
What is the combined parcel?
Well, when you combine something, you add them together. So you would-
But it, so clarification then, or does it require a single lot? Or you, according to one thing you had pointed out, it could be parcel or parcels?
You had, you had, you had done some additional research, I know you had pulled some, some things out.
We, I had looked into this, and granted that the law here is a little vague, unfortunately. It does not spec, specifically state that it must be, through the subdivision process, combined, from a subdivision standpoint. It just says combined. The problem with that sort of language is that if you then go to-
What?
To an interpretation of it, and the interpretation that the applicant is proposing is a valid application, given the language that's used, as opposed to also, I think the language that Sharon, the interpretation, is also a valid interpretation. But legally, the courts tend to side with applicants, figuring that the town had the opportunity to write the law, and if they failed to be concise in what they wanted and the specifics of how they wanted something to happen, that was their failure, and therefore the tie usually goes to the applicant.
There's, um-
And I, it is-
Uh-huh.
I'm sorry?
I said, uh-huh.
Yeah.
There's the other language of the, of the zoning law with respect to the country in two, which is not being read. A minimum lot area of 250 gross acres is required for a country in two. When an applicant proposes a country in two development on a parcel or combined parcels of land in excess of 250 acres, et cetera. So there's contemplation that it could be combined parcels involved.
So combined, does that mean, you know, that made into one parcel?
Doesn't say they have to be, doesn't say they have to be consolidated by subdivision.
And some other specific language, I'm sorry.
No.
And some other specific language in both the SEACER resolution and the code talks about retaining the rights to development on that, on that property.
That's the rest of that clause.
Okay.
Yeah, the rest of that, we're not worried about the rest.
Well, I think it's important-
We're worried about the 250, yes, because I have that all written in it, too.
So I think the importance of that is that it was contemplated that there would be this large area of land, and it may not be one single subdivided lot. It was just that the resolution took it to the next step, because I think that's what the application was for in the beginning.
But the law does say that if you wish to do something on the excess above 250 acres, another project use that, then you have to subdivide that out and preserving the gross 250 acres. So the only time subdivision appears to come into play, the way this law is written now, is if an applicant having 500 and something acres or whatever chooses to do something on the acreage that's beyond the 250 that they need to put to the country in two, they need to subdivide that out for that other project.
And if they were to, if you were to combine this now to, with, to 500 acres or whatever it comes to, and then take 250 off of it later, how is, how is that a hardship?
A hardship to-
To the development.
Oh, you're saying by consolidating all 500 now?
Yes.
Well, I think it, what happens is, sorry, what happens is, is then we're going outside of, there's legal questions about what can potentially be developed on land beyond that. It opens up doors for, for questions that, should something else be evaluated, a potential uses. What we're saying is, we're sticking with what was originally done to avoid opening all those questions, because we're not planning on doing anything at this very moment. It's kind of actually an option to address the DOH comment, while also avoid these additional, additional problems. So, long story short is, it, it becomes somewhat of a weakness to, to bring all the land in at this very moment.
I think, sure, not, I'm putting, maybe I'm putting words in your mouth, Anthony, and if I am-
No, your words are good, so let's go.
Please correct me. I think one thing that the applicant, I think justifiably, is trying to avoid here, at this point in the process, is consolidating 500 acres and having someone interpret that as being the amount of land that's really committed to this project, when in fact only 250 acres needs to be committed.
However, may I comment? It seems to me the only hardship entailed in deciding, based on your best guess now, what portion of land to add to equal 250 acres, would be the need to come back at some later time when you said, oh, we really wanna change this lot line a bit. So you'd, you'd come and apply for a lot line change. But that's, that's not an extreme hardship. You could decide now what additional portion to add.
Well, it's gonna depend, too, on what the remainder of the site plan looks like and what we decide to do down, down the road. And we don't have any immediate use for, for this extra land, for the remainder of the 250 acres, other than what we're showing. So to, to sort of put a line which would essentially be somewhat arbitrary across the property, and then come back and have to just change the whole thing, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. And, and it's not a requirement of the, of the code that we consolidated into a single lot. So what we're just saying is, we're only asking to do this, one, because the Board of Health made it an issue for us. And we're trying to get this done so we can just get the manor house work underway and get the construction road built and stuff like that. We're only talking about this thing because it came up in the, in the Department of Health review.
That's, that's, and that's, that's sort of, that's why we're here, asking for this.
Right. Even if there was, I mean, I don't think this is the preferable way, but even if it was just getting this condition off of Phase 1 approval in some way, I'm not sure how we could structure that, to just let us get the Phase 1 signed, just so we could start restoring the, like Jonathan said, restoring these buildings. We actually were trying not to complicate or concern the board by doing this, this way. And, you know, thinking practically, if you create a lot, you start, and then you, you file this, you create a whole, you're, you're going through a whole subdivision, you're filing this, you're going through the county records, you're creating, and then you're, you know, relatively soon coming back and gonna have to change it again, that's not exactly great for title either. So it was just, it seemed more, more complex to do it that way.
Yeah. With, with the full understanding that we have got to give 250 acres to this project, and we were showing the same parcels that we've always shown.
And it's the 250 acres. And it's the 250 acres that's been approved. It's, it's, it's not like that's changing at this moment. Of course, like I said, we're working with the board for the next phases and for getting through this phase, but it's not changing any of that at this moment.
I think what it is, too, is we have really no idea where this 250 acres is, other than it's gonna be part of that lot.
No, actually, it's shown, it's shown on-
But it keeps changing.
Well-
Well, if it's shown on it, why can't you consolidate it now if it's shown?
Well, it's shown in terms of SEACER evaluation.
It's shown without survey.
Right.
Essentially. It is shown without, it is shown as a conceptual line without survey at this point in time.
Then, so then, should the resolution say that this site plan is part of a, however you have to word it, is part of the full 250-plus acres of the country in two, of some proper wording?
This, this site plan, what we're having approved is part of that 250.
Yeah, I know, but should, it should say that on that plan.
Yeah, and that's fine.
That's fine?
Yeah. Yeah, it is.
Yeah, because if you go ahead and do whatever it is you're doing to Grasmere, and you get that all done, you could open it, and the other 250 acres is just still out there somewheres, with no, with no defining boundary. You know, it should be defined somehow on the site plan, very, very clear, if it's gonna be an easement, however it's gonna be.
I think in fairness to the applicant, that unless they choose to do something else on the other portions of the property, until they do such a thing, then all the property that they currently have under that ownership is part of the country and the 500 and whatever acre it is, is part of that.
What uses are available?
Well, the residential, let's say at the bottom end, let's say you wanna chop off 250 acres at the bottom end of it and do a residential development, they could do that.
Whatever's allowed in the, was it the RA 10 district?
Right.
All right, so they can continue on with the operation of that 250 acres or 450?
As long as they maintain 250 acres dedicated to the country in two, they can do whatever they want, well, within the zoning law, with the remainder.
But it's a floating 200, 250 acres or 200 acres now?
But if they choose to do something else at the other end of it, such as a housing development or something like that, then, according to the law, they have to subdivide that land out for that new use. It's no longer a floating situation. They have to subdivide out that land for that use, and 250 acres or plus has to remain dedicated to the country in two.
I have a question. I'm trying to understand what the town's vulnerability is under the zoning law. So I'm gonna give an, an extreme example. Let's say that something terrible happened, and there was a lawsuit, and the land that is not now these two acres, I mean, these two parcels that are being combined, somehow is won in a lawsuit by someone else, so it's no longer available. Does that mean that a country in two cannot operate on these parcels which have been, are being consolidated?
I would, I would imagine so, yes. If they lost that property, yeah, then it would go under separate ownership, would no longer, the special permit goes with the ownership of the property. The site plan does run with the property, but it goes with the ownership of the property. If they lost that property or sold it or something like that, then they would also possibly face the problem of losing their special use permit for the country in two. The process is-
Possibly, but not automatic.
Well, process, what happens is, there would be a hearing held by the planning board to look at what's happened, and if we felt that they no longer met the acreage requirement, then we would revoke the special use permit.
If I could ask-
Michael, it would also be a condition of a certificate of occupancy as issued, so it wouldn't even be a, a planning proceeding necessarily, it would be a proceeding for the zoning enforcement, sir. Because the maintenance of 250 acres would be a condition of issuance and maintenance of the CO for the country in two.
Exactly right. And, and just to clarify, it's not that there's a floating 250 acres. And, and just to clarify, it's not that there's a floating 250 acres. The, the, the application is for three tax parcels, the approval is for three tax parcels, which adds up over 500 acres.
Right.
The land that's approved, per plans that, that are on record with the town, that is Secur findings, that's on record with the town, as that's shown, that, that development is approved across those three parcels. We're just not creating a separate parcel for just that. So it's still on that land, it's still approved where it's shown to be approved, they're still well in excess of 250 acres. And if we, if we come back with Phase Two and say, oh, hey, guess what, we're adding another 50 acres, it's going to be 300 acres, you know, as a total. We're just saying it's never going to be less than 250 acres. But, but it's not floating. It's, it's all within that, that, that land that's owned by the Mensch, the Mensch Family Holdings. It's, it's all the land that's shown, that's, that's being disturbed, is the same land we're talking about. So it's, again, it's not floating, it's just, we haven't narrowed it down at this point.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, the floating, I, I don't interpret it as floating, other than we just don't know where the defined line is in the 250 acres.
But if we want to do something that is going to, that is going to, that is going to, you know, add additional building, or, or, as Michael pointed out, some sort of a compatible use on, on the other section of the property, then we need to define it. Right now, it's just being used as woodland and farm, and that's our immediate plan for the land, just to keep it that way. And right now, it's 500 acres, other than this particular disturbance area that we identified, that's, that's the 500.
And similarly, it's almost like if you have a house, and you need four acres for a house, but you have 10 acres, you don't cut off the four out of the 10 to show what you need for that, it's just you have 10, and you only needed four. It's kind of similar to that.
But you would cut it out if you're going to subdivide for two more houses on the original land.
If you're going to subdivide, right. If you're going to subdivide for two more houses, that's, that's, it's just a bigger, a bigger now.
Other questions, members of the board? Members of the public, anyone have anything they want to say?
So.
Yes. If you'll come up to the microphone.
I think it's really good that the Health Department saw that the parcels had Decepticon one, and some buildings on the other. So that's pretty, pretty logical that they consolidate that. You know, I'm in the title insurance business, I've been doing this for 45 years, they always do that. That's, that's a given. The other thing is, the road being changed is really a brilliant idea, because it gives you a lot more site distance, and it makes it a lot better, you know? We had the famous case up here with Tom Frost over there on 60 Salisbury Turnpike, where the road was, used to go that way, but they did the same thing, because of like some limited site distance. And that, and you know, those, those roads, the way they headed before, was adequate for the purposes they've used it up till today, but by changing the, having a little bit more traffic, I think this is much better, and I'm glad that the town highway superintendent signed off on it. Very glad for that.
Thank you.
Robert Donaldson, Mill Road. Just a clarification, and for the record, all right, the Mill Road entrance, how it's being revised, during the construction phase, all right, all vehicles associated with the construction, the workers, and everyone else associated with it are going to be using the Route Nine entrance, correct?
Yeah, yeah, they're going to be using Route Nine. Exactly. Now, that's, our, our plan is, considering we, you know, at the point that we have approval, one of the first things we would do, you know, was that.
Okay, good. During the operational phase of the country end two, all right, all maintenance, staff, deliveries, anyone else associated with the operation of the country end two would not be using the Mill Road entrance, but would be using the Route Nine entrance, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. I joined board member Sharon Sharad about my concern about the private entrance, right before the Van Steenburgh Bridge, I believe that's called, Daz Lane is the private entrance?
Yeah.
Is it your intention at all during the construction phase, or the operational phase of this project, to use Daz Lane in any way?
We've got, I mean, Daz Lane doesn't connect to this.
Okay. But my question is, during the construction and operational phase of it, is it your intention to use Daz Lane at all?
No, we're not looking at, Daz Lane's not, the construction entrance, everything's coming from right here, and, and that Daz Lane goes down to, I mean, right now, it's under several parcels, it's not actually part of the three parcels that we're talking about at this point. And if we, if we, if we decided to do anything different, we would have to take it front of the board, and talk to the board about it, and explain exactly what was going on, so that everybody gets what they're saying.
Okay. And that's correct?
Yes.
If the applicant wanted to use Daz Lane, he would have to come before the board?
Yeah, it's never been part of any application before us, so yes, they would have to bring it before us.
Okay, because I raised this issue back in November of 2013, at the first public hearing, right, about that Daz Lane. So, so it's my understanding that he would have to appear again about using that.
It's not part of this application.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Jonathan.
Anyone else? Yes?
Can I say, right across the room, I think this is.
I can't hear her.
My concern is, I want to be sure the entrance is only an entrance, forever, because if someone is coming out of that driveway, they'll be shining the lights right in their house, hours long, and the people leaving, and it's all just, is there any way that you absolutely can make it so it never happens?
It will definitely be one of the conditions of approval, and one of the approved aspects of the site plan is that it's only an entrance, and is never to be used as an exit. The only exception would be if it was an emergency of some sort, an emergency vehicle, something like that. Otherwise, no. It can never be used as anything but an entrance, and the applicant will be using signage. As I understand, it'll be a single lane, so it's not going to be a two-lane anyway, using one-way signs. Now, some people, you know, they see the exit-only sign at the public parking lot in the village, and they try to come in there, and if you happen to be exiting, you sometimes have a problem. So some people are a little difficult reading signs. But yes, it will definitely be a condition, it will never, ever be anything but an entrance, and the applicant's going to do everything they can to make sure people know that, every now and, as long as it's a country end. But every now and then, someone is going to either not read the signs, or figure it doesn't apply to me, or something like that, and that can happen, unfortunately.
Okay, well, I understand that, I just thought you were having people making these days. But you just said, they want it to be two.
Yes.
And what happens if the time comes, and they want something else?
They come back. They would come back before us for approval, and I believe it's the feeling of this Planning Board, that that particular entrance onto Mill Road, given the nature of Mill Road, it must always remain an entrance only. The only possible exception would be if it became a private home again, and I, I don't see that as a realistic expectation. That's the only possible way that could ever be conceivably used as an exit, is if it became a private home for, you know, a single-family residence.
A planning could change, people change.
Yep, they do. I like to think the wisdom that we have shown on this, for that being an entrance only, will continue with any, you know, future members of this Planning Board. It's, it's so clearly important that that be an entrance only. Obviously, we can't guarantee what people will do in the future, but I think it just makes so much sense, it's so reasonable, the argument, the discussion has made it, I think it's really, really made it important to maintain that as an entrance only. It's not suitable for two-way traffic, and I'm, I do believe that anyone else who sits on the Planning Board would recognize that. I certainly hope so.
Do you have any possibility that any deed?
It'll definitely be in the site plan. We can't change the deed, that would be, that's a different legal procedure, but it will be in any site plan that comes from the town of Rhinebeck, that that remains an entrance only. And that's the one thing that we can enforce. We can't enforce, for example, deed restrictions on deeds, we can't enforce those. The town doesn't have the legal authority to enforce those. We can only enforce what the Planning Board puts on as conditions and requirements for site plan approval, and it will always be one of those.
They're trying to note it around the block.
Well, I have a question, and I might not be able to answer the answer, but I mean, I have been on the bond with a family, which was a subdivision a few years ago, and the requirement was going to be that if you had a deed restriction, you chose not to do that, or something was not approved. But if you could have, maybe I should do that, and the not connection's.
I think what that was, I think that was during a subdivision, and I think it was, it was one of the conditions of the subdivision that would run with the land. They're not doing subdivision of this property. Therefore, the.
Do you mind if I?
Well, they're combining those two up by the house, yes, that's true. But I don't know that we can require that as a deed restriction, I don't know. I can, I can certainly ask our, our attorney, I'm, I'm not a lawyer, I don't know. I know we can make it a condition of site plan approval, and that runs with the property, and that's something that the zoning enforcement office and the town can enforce, and I know they can enforce, we can enforce that. Deed restrictions tend to be things you, we can't enforce, although we have another applicant about that, and we're asking our attorney to actually let us know to what extent the town can enforce existing deed restrictions, things of that sort, things that were created outside of the actual Planning Board process.
If I could just add to that as well, also, just to come back to the scope of what we're doing here, this project has been evaluated for these purposes, a condition's been imposed, we're completely agreement that that condition will stay. So, for purposes of relating a new condition like that to what we're asking for now, really wouldn't have a basis or a connection, in my opinion, but that's, you know, beyond the other legal points that you may suggest.
And not being a lawyer, just playing one on TV here, right? So, I understand your concern, I mean, I suppose if one were, well, you know when you try to go to pay at, you're coming out of a parking lot, and then you try to back up, and you go over one of those things that knocks your tires out? Well, I suppose if they had one of those, so you can go in, but you can't go out, that would tend to put a quick end to anyone trying to exit onto Mill Road. But I don't know if we can require that.
Anyway, and I do have a question about the two-year plan. Okay, so, some people, when they decide they want to sell that other parcel, they didn't do that to take away their special use permit. But the building that was built, the property was already obligated.
They shut them?
They were going to say, oh, shut it all down, tear it all down, and they all.
The, the town would be obligated to do that. It would be a blatant violation of their approval, both special permit and site plan. I believe the town would be obligated to do precisely that, if they fell below the 250 acres dedicated to the country end. I don't think the town would have a choice.
And one of the points that I wanted to mention is, I don't understand the hardship of combining the projects, and you have to subdivide a parcel of the park later, but we think that the applicant mentioned that, okay, they might want to subdivide the piece off of that, and what's going to bring that, and by the process, what would be that?
I'm, I would guess what it is, is that the applicant, since the zoning law doesn't require that they do that, it's primarily a time, time feature, just be, given the schedules of the Planning Board's meetings, and how we're going into August and things like that, it would take them a few months to get through that subdivision process, since it hasn't started yet, and I think that they're eager to try and get some work done. I think the manor house needs some rather significant repairs due to deterioration, and I think part of it is that they're really just trying to get going on the manor house itself, and they need to have our sign-off on that, so that they can do the restoration work that they need to do, particularly on the exterior. I think a lot of it is a time issue, as much as anything else.
Yeah, we'd like to get that construction entrance established this fall, because obviously, concerns have been raised about, about construction vehicles going down the existing drive. Before we can start work, we'd need to establish the construction entrance, and we want to do that when the weather permits. And if we have to wait for three months to go through a lot consolidation again, which at this point doesn't really get anybody anything, then we're going to miss some of that window.
And, and you're all but guaranteeing that you have to come back and change it, because the sub, the details, the site plan details of the subsequent phases aren't developed yet. So, we're not in a position to create it, so you're almost guaranteeing you're coming back for that. At this point, we're just, now we're guaranteeing we only have to do it once.
We have to come back, too.
Right. What I mean is, we're gonna have, you're going to be filing a plat for a new parcel that you're definitely going to have to change, is the point.
Well, actually, you'll be filing it.
Yeah.
But, but that's, that's, that's my best guess, is the sort of the thinking here, is to try, I think the manor house needs some very serious exterior work, and in order to be able to proceed with that, under the site plan, and there's certain other aspects that they're working with some other state groups, things like that, they need to have